So if anyone hopefully comes back on here. Get a few more faces pop on. I'm just waiting for, looking for Councilor Brooks and Councilor Kellogg since they have proclamations to do first thing. And I see Counselor Kellogg is here, but no video, but I'm not seeing Bridget.
Here I am, sorry.
All right, so let's go ahead and get started. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 28th, 2020, Twalton City Council Meeting. Welcome one and all. It's a beautiful evening. Tonight, we have two announcements to start off our agenda tonight with. The first being a proclamation declaring October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Twalton. Do we have any staff presentation, Sherilyn, for this?
Let me just ask the chief if he had anything for this.
No, I actually don't have anything for the council. I appreciate the time tonight. And yeah, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so we'll be doing a few things to promote that throughout the month of October.
Right, so we'll have, we'll have Counselor Brooks read that announcement. And then I know Chief Steele has an impromptu announcement as item number three. That was in the paper yesterday, and we'll get back to that after our second announcement or proclamation. So Counselor Brooks, you're up.
I'm sorry, but I can't seem to find the proclamation in my packet.
I can project it on the screen if you'd like, Counselor Brooks.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Bates, can you share a screen for Nicole Morris, please?
It's ready for you.
I found it. Actually, I found it. I got it.
Perfect.
Thank you. Proclamation declaring the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Twalton. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, identities, socioeconomic levels, regions, backgrounds, beliefs and abilities. And domestic violence includes physical, emotional, social, sexual, spiritual, financial and digital abuse and can occur between family members, intimate partners and within dating relationships. And whereas more than one in three women and one in four men in the United States report having experienced domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault or physical assault by an intimate partner during their lifetimes. One in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year. And 90% of these children are eyewitnesses to the violence, to this violence and grow up in violent homes. And are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, often resulting in lifelong trauma. And whereas it is not uncommon for domestic violence abusers to isolate their victims as an act of control or to reduce opportunity for disclosure of abuse. And the current societal conditions, including reduced accessibility to shelters and resources, are likely furthering the impact of these actions. And whereas by our law enforcement officers put their lives at risk daily responding to domestic violence incidents. And the Twalton Police Department believes that a coordinated community effort is imperative to raising awareness of the increased risks of to survivors due to COVID-19 and putting a stop to this cycle of violence. And now therefore be proclaimed that the city of Twalton designates the month of October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent platform to show support for the domestic violence advocates, crisis hotline staff, victim service organizations, the prosecutors who hold the offenders accountable and law enforcement officers in our community. It also provides our community the opportunity to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support to the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, resources, hope and assistance to victims. Introduced and adopted this 20th day of September 2020 by the city of Twalton, Oregon.
Thank you. Had a neighbor fire up their shop back. And it's quite loud, so I had to close my windows and stuff. All right, next up is item number two, proclamation declaring September 2020 as emergency preparedness month. Is this, is Clay still doing it or?
Lindsay Marshall, I believe, is on the line. She's.
Yes. Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. So again, my name is Lindsay Marshall and my primary role, one of them at the city is emergency management. And if you haven't noticed, the 2020 has brought us a wide variety of emergency situations. And there's been a lot going on at the city as well in terms of emergency work from reviewing our city emergency plan that we work on in conjunction with our partners at the county, TBFNR and others responsible for emergencies. And we've been working on getting more involved in emergency training, including, you know, the Great Shakeout that we're going to be doing in October and other events as they come back online. A lot of things have been postponed due to COVID and other things and the fires. But we work well with Washington County in conjunction with their emergency management team. We work with CERT and I can remember from the community survey that came back that the city of Twalton residents have rated our emergency preparedness very highly and we have a lot of that. Those thanks to go to our community emergency response team and the great work that they're doing in the community. We've also ramped up our communications, working with Megan George and our communications team on getting things up on the website and out on social media to try to keep our citizens engaged and aware of all the emergency management and then preparedness that the city is involved in. So that brings us to a proclamation is September is National Preparedness Month. And so we're a little bit of a proclamation in hindsight, if you will, since it is the end of September. But it is a good recognition of all the things that the city has been doing and that our residents have been doing in light of all the 2020 has brought us so far.
Thank you, Lizzy. Counselor Kellogg.
Yes, what a wonderful introduction to the concept. Thanks, Lindsay.
Absolutely.
A proclamation declaring the month of September 2020 as emergency preparedness month in the city of Twalton. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security each September to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses and schools. Whereas disasters often strike quickly with little or no warning and residents might be forced to evacuate neighborhoods, schools and work sites or be confined to their homes. Whereas the world is currently grappling with the COVID-19 pandemic, which is likely, but hopefully not, to continue to impact the nation and city for an extended period of time, requiring residents prepare differently for other disasters that may affect their community. Whereas Oregon is currently experiencing record-breaking wildfires throughout the state, which have resulted in evacuations affecting both counties in which Twalton resides, Washington and Clackamas Counties. Whereas emergency preparedness is the responsibility of every resident of the city of Twalton and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. Whereas Preparedness Month creates a significant opportunity for every resident of the city of Twalton to reflect and act on shared responsibility to be prepared. Whereas the city supports and encourages citizen participation in the Twalton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, so our community can be prepared, trained and respond to emergencies. Whereas the city of Twalton participates in the Great Shakeout Drill each October to promote earthquake awareness for employees. Now, therefore, it is proclaimed by the Twalton City Council that September 2020 is emergency preparedness month. And the city encourages all residents and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together toward creating a more prepared community. Introduced and so proclaimed this 28th day of December or September 2020.
Right, thank you. And now we have something that's not on the agenda, but is super special. Is a special announcement from Chief Steele. If you saw yesterday's papers, some pretty good news about the Twalton Police Department. You're muted, Bill.
Not again. So we'll do that one more time. Your chief of police, thank you, Mr. Aaron, members of council. So yeah, the Oregonian for the last nine years has ran a program that attempts to identify the top workplaces in Oregon and Southwest Washington. Earlier this year, we learned that we were nominated to be a top workplace in Oregon. And that led to a survey of our department staff to kind of determine what their level of engagement was, what their feeling was for the culture within the department, how appreciated they felt with, by the management, how they got along with coworkers. And yeah, we recently learned that we were awarded one of the top workplaces in Oregon. We can kind of compete it against other businesses in the same size range, so employees from 35 to 99. And I believe we were the only government entity on that list of a total of 92 businesses and entities that were recognized and definitely the only police department. So it's something we're very proud of. I'm very proud of our staff and how we interact with the community on a daily basis. And we got a nice, nice little award to go with it. So we're pretty pleased with that. And, and again, I can't thank the staff enough for, for what they do every single day.
Yeah, I mean, when I got the notice from Sherilyn, I was pretty pumped. That's great. A great reflection upon you and your leadership and the officers and everyone at the department that they enjoy working there. I think that's one of the biggest things you can ask for in a police department is that people enjoy doing the work, enjoy working with the other, each other. And it's going to reflect when they interact with the community, that they're happy at their jobs and happy serving the community. So again, just want to thank you again and all your staff for making it a terrific place to work. And I'm sure other counselors might want to say something else, too. Anyone else want to chime in? Counselor Kellogg. I'm sorry, Counsel Morrison.
No, just, I want to very quickly, since we're not here all night, but just repeat exactly what Mayor Buehnen said, chief. Outstanding award, outstanding contribution from your staff and, you know, great leadership in the police department. And I think that's reflected throughout the community and I appreciate all the great work that you do.
Others?
You know.
That was quick, Valerie. Counselor Brooks.
Well, I said it earlier at the Police Foundation meeting, but I do want to say publicly, congratulations. And it's just so good, not only for our force, for our city, but for our community that we have people that are working in our police department that are happy and that feel satisfied in their work. And I know interpersonally that that is really strong relationally into the communities that they serve. And I just want to thank Chief Steele for your leadership and and running a fantastic department. We're really fortunate to be able to say hello to all of the new hires and say goodbye to all the folks that retire and stay engaged with the police banquet, which is amazing. Talking about, like we talked about earlier, the, in many cases, they're our first responders to health crisis. So they're every day saving lives and protecting our city. So congratulations. Good job.
Anyone else?
Me, Maria. So chief, thank you very much for your service and your team. I think you guys are wonderful. I've had nothing but great experience and great things that people say about the, about your, your officers and yourself. And I'm really, really proud of, of you and the team. And I'm really happy that you're, you're in Twalton and, and serving our community. So thank you very much for everything. You deserve it. And I'm here to support you and speak for myself. So anything, just let me know. How can I help? Thank you.
Counsel President Grimes.
Thank you. I, you know, I'd like to reiterate what the other counselors said. I don't think there's too many laudatory things that you can say about our police department. Ever since I've been on council, our Twalton Police Department has always been such an enormous source of pride for me personally. And the care that you take of our community is just outstanding. I cannot tell you how many times I've received comments from neighbors and other people living in Twalton and other parts of the city where they've just had some outstanding things to say about our department. There's one story in particular, I can't share some of the particular details, but I had a citizen in Twalton say that on the worst day of their life, on the worst day of their family's life, that they had the most gracious, thoughtful, caring, outpouring of support from the Twalton Police Department over and above anything that they could have hoped to have had. And it made literally the worst day of their lives survivable. And I just can't say enough how much I feel for our officers. And in this time of national trial and national examination of how we as communities and local governments function to have a police department that we hold to such a high standard and that has such integrity. I just think that that's something that we should all be so proud of. And I'm just so grateful for everything that you guys do and the men and the women that work in the police department. And I think that this acknowledgement is as great as it is. I think we all know how terrific you guys are. So congratulations. And again, thank you so much for the care that you take of us and of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. I really appreciate the kind words, but we got an amazing staff. So we appreciate your support for sure.
Terrific. All right, moving on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. So I just want to be clear, if you want to comment on anything with the planned text amendment that's on the agenda later on, you should wait till then. That's not part of this public comment period. This is for items that we are not discussing tonight. So please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the Zoom meeting or at the poll center who would like to address the council, this would be an appropriate time. So is there anyone at the poll center, Bates?
Mayor, we have no one at the poll center. We do have Anthony Stewart for public comment on Zoom.
All right, Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, council. It's great to see everybody's face. I watch it on the speaker view. So it's, it's like watching popcorn. It's great to see everybody bounce up. It's appreciate the, the extensive amount of time that the council put to discuss the proposed regulations on behalf of Western Oregon. Wanted to say thank you. We know it has been a long road. I had just a few points to make. One of them was to also thank the counselors with respect to the nomenclature. Most of the communications that I've had with the city usually refer to it as adult-use cannabis. And just want to let you know that, you know, both with the social equity passed and the broad nature of the term marijuana, the plant, the industry, the medicine have all more adequately been labeled as either medical cannabis or adult-use cannabis. And I really appreciate the, the entire council's modifications there. I wanted to bring just back to the council's attention the dual nature of the licenses. There is a single public facing and that is retailers and there are a number of private facing. A lot of times we think of grows, but there are also processors. There are research certificates for individuals who are conducting studies. And there are wholesalers. You had mentioned that there was a question with regards to the size limitations. The grow facilities are the licenses that were capped at a maximum of 10,000 square foot per licensee in a single facility. It's an interesting element to note, though, that the demand was actually greater on the smaller side. From 5,000 and 10,000, they were actually additional categories below that for 2,500, 1,250. They call them the micro tiers. And I wanted to let the council know that just like there's craft microbreweries, there are craft cannabis. And as you're moving forward in your research, I'd encourage you to take a look at that side of the market. It's very thoughtful. It's done by individuals and businesses who are investing, not just in a, excuse me, excuse me, a mass production, but are really trying to bring a measure of quality and thoughtfulness to the industry. It matches the quality and thoughtfulness of this council. And I appreciate Counselor Kellogg's points about this is an opportunity for jobs and businesses to come to town. And a final comment with respect to legacy, which is understandable and appreciated by all the members. It was a quote that I always loved is that someone sitting in the shade today is doing so because someone a long time ago planted a tree. And there's positive and negative ways to move forward with any positive, excuse me, policy discussion. And there's a lot of positives that are coming out of here. And I think that that is just as strong an element of legacy for the entire council to be proud of. That I don't want, I don't want it to be overshadowed by anybody thinking that this is a negative action. I think you're doing a great job and the community will appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other late-breaking public comment, folks, Bates?
No, Mayor.
All right. Okay, so let's go move on to the consent agenda. Those items in the consensus agenda are considered routine and will be adopted by one motion. Unless someone in the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of two items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the city council work session and regular meeting minutes of August 10th, 2020, and September 14th, 2020. And item number two, consideration of resolution number 5521-20, awarding financial, I'm sorry, awarding fiscal year 2020, 2021 outside agency grant funds to provide services to the Twalton community. Would anybody like anything, any council member like an agenda item pulled off consent? All right.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda is ready. Discussion on the motions. All right, so Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Counselor Kellogg.
Hi.
Counselor Pratt. Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Grimes.
I.
I vote I also. It's unanimous. All right, moving on to special reports. Presentation of the final report of the feasibility of urban renewal districts in Twalton, Oregon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. My name is Jonathan Taylor. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city of Twalton. I'm here tonight with both Elaine and Nick, our two consultants that provided the technical study for the feasibility of two urban renewal districts in the city of Twalton. Just for clarification, the two districts in reference are what we call the North District, which is the I-5 corridor down Twalton Sherwood Road and the Basalt Creek Southwest Corridor District, which includes Basalt Creek and parts of the Southwest Industrial Concept Area. I'm going to turn it over to both Elaine and Nick just to provide a brief recap, a quick overview of the feasibility study that you received at the last council meeting, just a little bit more in detail. And then also provide any opportunities for council to ask questions regarding any kind of concepts, comments, questions or concerns regarding the feasibility. And then staff will briefly outline our next steps. Elaine, Nick?
Hi, this is Elaine Howard. I've been working with you over the last year on all things urban renewal. And I am basically just passing the baton here over to Nick. Nick is the principal of Tiberius Solutions. And Nick has taken the lead on the financial feasibility. The financial feasibility is really a technical document that just looks at the amount of funds an urban renewal area might be able to produce over time, given certain boundaries and assumptions about financial growth. So Nick is on the screen. You can see him. He'll be presenting both studies. And then both Nick and I will be available for questions afterwards.
Okay, thank you, Elaine, and thank you, Mayor and Council for having us virtually tonight. There are no surprises in this presentation. It was last month in August that we joined you for another of these city council meetings. And at that point in time, we were presenting our draft findings, went over all of the key conclusions from the analysis and presented the findings of financial feasibility. Based on that presentation, there was no significant feedback either from council or staff. So we took our draft results and we wrote up our final reports. Those reports are each about 20 pages long and are in your council packet. We are not planning tonight to go through them line by line and put everyone asleep as we go over the annual financial details of these technical studies. But we will just briefly reiterate the key conclusions that we presented last month. And once we have gone through this, assuming that there are no changes in the response from city council compared to last month, then I think Jonathan and Elaine can talk a little bit more about what the potential next steps would be for if the city wants to move forward with evaluating the potential of urban renewal in these areas. So for the North District, the key takeaway from the North District is that there is significant financial capacity for the tool of urban renewal that all told the urban renewal area, if created, for the boundary that we evaluated. And if it were around for a 30-year period, which is a traditional timeline for most urban renewal areas, could generate somewhere between 114, pardon me, 118 and $171 million of funding for urban renewal projects. And that's in today's dollars, already adjusting for inflation and the cost of interest and all of that. So significant is not a black and white term. There's a lot of gray area to it. But clearly this urban renewal area has significant financial capacity. One of our other key conclusions is that there are actually ways for the city to pursue urban renewal area, an urban renewal area here that would mitigate those, that significant financial capacity. So while it's great to have an area that can fund a large amount of projects, all of that funding does come from a division of property tax revenue that is foregone revenue for the city and other overlapping taxing districts. And so we know all cities want to be respectful of those impacts and want to make sure that they are making prudent decisions on how they can balance the needs of the urban renewal area with the needs of the broader community. So our report did identify that there are several approaches the city could take to mitigate the urban renewal impacts moving forward. Some of those options include reducing the size of the boundary, having a smaller urban renewal area moving forward. Another is to commit to a more generous revenue sharing formula. So there are some statutes that require revenue to be shared with the overlapping taxing districts after a certain point in time. But some urban renewal areas have agreed to a more generous formula so that cities and the affected taxing districts don't have to wait until the urban renewal area expires before they too get to enjoy the benefits of the growth in assessed value. And then the third approach for reducing the impact of the urban renewal area would be to reduce the duration of the plan and continue with the current size of the boundary and regular urban renewal rules. But just shrinking the timeline that the urban renewal area would be around to less than 30 years, say 20 or 25. And obviously, the shorter timeline has a smaller financial impact to all the foregone taxing districts. So at this point in time, the feasibility So at this point in time, the feasibility study, again, a very technical document, doesn't weigh in on which of those approaches is the best approach or how aggressively the city should use any of those approaches to reduce the financial capacity. We think all of those approaches are valid and should be on the table if the city moves forward with evaluating urban renewal there. And that would be a conversation for key stakeholders, including the affected taxing districts. One of the other key findings was that the North District Study Area could benefit from more significant public outreach prior to adopting an urban renewal plan. So while we know that the area has a great deal of needs, there is not necessarily a very clear, specific vision for the area. And having a clear vision that identifies specific projects and knowing how the community ranks those projects in terms of their levels of prioritization, that can be very key for securing public support for an urban renewal plan. Folks generally aren't interested in urban renewal for the sake of urban renewal, but urban renewal for funding projects that are of high importance to the community to really achieve a vision that the entire city and all of its residents and businesses can get behind. And our last key point, which we sort of reiterate throughout all of our urban renewal projects, is that coordination with affected taxing districts will be key. So as I mentioned before, urban renewal is a division of tax revenue. That means that there are foregone revenue from the overlapping taxing districts. And so they really do work as partners for urban renewal areas and keeping them in the loop and coordinating with them as you move forward is important. So that was our key findings for the North District. I'll quickly go through similar set of findings for Basalt Creek Study Area and then turn it over to questions. For Basalt Creek, again, we found significant financial capacity there. But the significant capacity in Basalt Creek is roughly 10% of the capacity that we were discussing for the North District area. So in Basalt Creek, we see funding that would be between 13 million and 26 million for projects in today's dollars. One thing to point out with Basalt Creek is that that 13 million to 26 million is still a sizable chunk of funding, but that is not available on day one. Urban renewal financial capacity starts very small and builds gradually over time. And so if the city has projects they'd like to see funded in the short term, the sooner that urban renewal is adopted in Basalt Creek, the better in terms of slowly building up that financial capacity that's needed so that you can then invest in the critical infrastructure projects there. Another finding is that the past planning efforts for Basalt Creek and the Southwest Industrial Area have identified key infrastructure projects that are needed in the area. So unlike, as we mentioned for the North District, we do not think that there would need to be a large sort of visioning exercise and substantial public outreach efforts to identify the types of projects that would go into an urban renewal plan in that area. And then again, as with all urban renewal areas, coordination with affected taxing districts is key as they're partners that do forego the revenue to help fund these urban renewal projects. So those were our key implications and conclusions. I don't know, Jonathan, if you maybe want to talk about what the next steps would be and then open it up for questions or vice versa.
I think I'll let, since it's fresh on the mind, council to ask questions and then based on those comments, we can talk about next steps.
Questions? Be tough. No one's hands shooting out there, it goes Bridget.
Um. You said that there are projects that would be, that have been identified already for Basalt Creek. Could you just tell me what that is?
So Jonathan, I think that question has to go back to you or maybe someone else on city staff.
So I'm going to defer that to Aquila. She's been more intimately aware of the Southwest Concept and Basalt Creek Planning.
Hi, sure. Aquila Heard Ravage Community Development Director. So thank you Elaine and Nick. And right, so councillor Brooks, the projects that Nick's referring to came out of the concept plan work. And so mostly right now, what that looks like are infrastructure projects. So in order for growth to occur in the Basalt Creek area specifically, there's, I think the concept plan called for, I think it was like five pump stations for sewer, which is the pump stations, one pump station alone is expensive. So in order to kind of facilitate development in that area, infrastructure would be needed. So our thought was it would be a very similar situation to how the Levitin area developed, where Lamb and Fujimi is located and JAE, so those kind of businesses located there after, you know, storm sewer, water roads were put in. So those were the projects that Nick is referring to.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions at this point?
Another question, but just as long as we're dreaming. One of the areas down there in Basalt Creek, one thing we've talked about is a long range plan would be an additional stop for the West Train. And we did some exploratory math with the folks at Trimed and it was like a $35 million project, something like that. But think about, you know, if that could get off the ground, how that would open up the ability for denser development down there while staying within the trip count that we have by providing a means for people to get in and out. So just, I know we're a long way away from adopting these districts, let alone planning them. But I encourage people to think big in that fashion.
Other questions, comments so far? All right, go ahead and keep going.
So I think if there are no more questions, real quick, council, based on the last August 10th city council meeting, you directed staff to continue that approach, both drafting a kind of a public outreach plan and also kind of a scope schedule type item and bring it back to you. If that is still the case, we'll delineate our next steps. Currently, we are poring over several documents, both the Southwest Concept Plan, Basalt Creek Plan, the former Twalton tomorrow for the North District, the Old Town Center Concept Plan, and just kind of looking at the pros and cons of what those plans offered. Then when the three, four-page draft is formulated, we'll send that over to Cheryl in the city management just to have kind of review. And then once we kind of compile that, because it'll be on two separate tracks, one for Basalt Creek and one for the North District, as you heard both Elaine and Nick state, that Basalt Creek will be fairly quick in comparison to what the North District will be. And then we will bring that back to you, that draft plan, which we were working on between August, excuse me, October 26th and the end of the year. So I see probably a two-type presentation, one for Basalt Creek and one for the North District, but I will follow Cheryl and Don's direction on that as we move forward. Mayor, I believe you're muted.
All right, so tonight is not a decision point, it's just a informational item, if you will. Any questions, comments for Jonathan? Are we satisfied at this point? Because there's probably a lot more to come, as councillor Kellogg says. That was one dense report.
Yeah, one, one really quick question and I, I just want to refresh. The percentage that we can have of the city under this plan is 25%. And I think you answered the question, I couldn't find it in your presentation as I was looking at some of that background and I forget the answer. Would we be able to do both and stay within 25% or will we only be able to do one to stay under the 25% rule?
So you're correct, councillor Morrison, with your first observation, you can do both. We did the maximum allowable and then if you decide to shrink, it gave you plenty of options.
Thank, that's kind of what I remembered, I just wanted clarification. Thank you very much, Jonathan.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, thank you Jonathan, thank Nick, thanks Elaine.
Thank you.
So moving on, let's see. The big thing for tonight, all right. Let me get my agenda set here. So next on the agenda is Plan Text Amendment 20-0003. Before we begin, I want to recap the process to date. On August 10th, the applicant presented a proposed Plan Text Amendment. The council conducted a public hearing and deliberated. A motion to deny the PTA was made and seconded. Before the motion could be voted upon, the council continued the matter to a date certain tonight. The applicant has now submitted a new proposal, which was included in the recent packet and is presented to city council tonight. In order to consider this applicant's new proposal, councillor Pratt will need to withdraw the motion to deny. Once the motion to deny is withdrawn, the council can proceed to reopen the public hearing to consider the new proposal and hear public testimony. Councillor Pratt.
Withdraw my prior motion to deny.
All right, thank you. Does any councillor object to councillor Pratt's request to withdraw the motion to deny? I'm hearing none, all right. So hearing no objection, I propose the hearing to be reopened and consider the applicant's new PTA proposal. Are there any objections to reopening the hearing? I hear none. So hearing none, we will now reopen the hearing to consider the applicant's new PTA proposal. The council will hear first from city staff, followed by the applicant. Next, we will hear public testimony for those in favor of the PTA, followed by public testimony from those opposing the PTA. Nancy just went upside down. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, the council may ask questions of staff, the applicant or any person who's testified. We will not hear the presentation from city staff.
Evening Mayor and City Council, Steve Cooper, Planning Manager. I'm here to make a brief presentation. I'd also like to enter this presentation into the record since it's not currently in your packet. So as council is aware, the applicant has presented an amended proposal, which is in your packet and before you tonight for your consideration, now that the record and hearing have been opened. So the first piece of the proposal in response to feedback from the council at your previous council meeting on August 10th is to retain the existing requirement that detached single-family dwellings go through a conditional use permit with the planning commission for small lot subdivision. The applicant has added that it would be subject to a different set of proposed development standards in exchange for a provision that 15% of the total units proposed in a development under this scheme would be townhouses or row homes. And so those specific development standards here are outlined in red and then contrasted with the existing development standards that would be applicable to other small lot detached, single-family homes in the same zoning district. And so probably the most notable of the proposed changes are a reduction in the minimum lot size from 4,500 square feet to 3,000 square feet. Some additional fairly minor changes. And then of note is the rear yard setback, a reduction from 15 feet to 10 feet. And then lastly, a slightly larger allowable lot coverage, so more structure able to be put on the building. Are there any questions from the council before I move through the presentation? Councillor Pratt?
On the small lot and maximum lot coverage, does that include the driveway? Or just the path for the house itself?
It would just include structures, not, not like a hardscaping, I guess you would call it. Yeah, that's a good question. Thank you. I'm sorry, it's hard to see. Are there any other questions from council at this point? I don't think so, okay. So I'm just going to walk through, just kind of based on that contrast of what the applicant's proposing, just walk through a couple of developments that have previously been approved in the RML zone. Some of them are small lot subdivisions and then some are examples of other types of development. The first of which is the Victoria Gardens subdivision. So Graham's Ferry is running north, south. There's obviously the wetland area there in a connection via pathway through to Victoria Woods. As you can see, you have detached, single-family homes, you have a minimum lot size of 4,500 square feet. Obviously, just due to the geometry of streets, you see some larger lot sizes on corners and radius lots. Obviously, this is one of the newest small lot, single-family detached subdivisions in the city. And so you see a slightly newer style of home development. And then we'll move locations so it's effectively the same type of development which you have here. So Boone's Ferry is running north, south. You have Twalton High School just to the north of these properties. And there are actually a couple of smaller, small lot subdivisions, not necessarily one larger one. But developed a little bit earlier in time and you can see that from the development style a little bit closer to the 1990s style of actual home development. And so similarly, you see a minimum of 4,500 square feet. You generally see some more lots, I think, than the previous example that are over 4,500 square feet. But still generally around that range. So just to kind of give you an idea of what the existing code allows for the small lot, single family. And so this next example is actually at the intersection of Norwood and 89th and just north of part of the site that's where the proposed regulations this evening would apply. It's also adjacent to those subdivision sites that we saw before. And so we see some townhome development here. It doesn't show the lot lines, but these are actually triplexes for the most part. And they are, so they're individual lots and then the dwellings are built in the row home style with a common wall that's attached on the lot line. As you can see from the street, they really don't necessarily look all that different from particularly the last example developed in roughly the same timeframe. They just kind of look like slightly larger homes, single-family detached homes that is. And then the last example takes us up to Graham's Ferry Road and Boone's, whoops, where's my cursor? Graham's Ferry Road and then Boone's Ferry gun running, running north to south. And this type of development, which is also an allowed use in the zone, is the condominium or multifamily, this particular example is a condominium, but a multifamily style of development. So you don't have individual lots and so the lot sizing and development standards don't necessarily take as prominent of a application in this particular instance. But so you see that that's a possible development style under the RML zoning. So any questions about those development styles or anything I can clarify before we move on? Seeing none. And then lastly, we put together just a couple of slides highlighting some pieces of the housing needs analysis in response to, this is material that is in the packet previously. And so it's just a little bit summarizing it and highlighting a couple of points in response to some of the questions that we heard previously. And so as you see here highlighted in the red boxes, they show that in the city outside of the Basalt Creek area, there's a very low amount of buildable land that is in the medium-low density residential zones and the medium-high density residential zones. And those are highlighted because those are zones in which townhomes are allowed, but they're not necessarily dense enough to support like a multifamily apartment complex, which would be allowed and supported in the high-density, high-rise and the high-density residential zones. And then conversely, in the low-density residential zone, the townhome has a conditional use permit, much like the single-family detached is a conditional use permit in this zone. So we don't see a lot of townhome development in that zone. And so what you see is that you don't have any medium-high density residential in Basalt Creek at all. That's why it's omitted from the lower part of the table. And then you have about sixty-nine total buildable acres, some of which is vacant, most of it, and some of which is buildable, meaning that it has some structures on it of some indeterminate, fairly low value, but is overall buildable. And so, of course, you see that the properties in question where the proposed amendments would apply make up quite a good amount of that sixty-nine acres. You have another ten-acre site on the west side of the Salt Creek Canyon along Graham's Ferry Road, which is also zoned RML that is roughly ten acres of that total buildable area. And this site is, give or take, the remainder within plus or minus a few acres. And so we also just had some questions clarifying the fifteen percent, which the applicant used to arrive the number in their proposal. And then just some questions, I think, kind of contrasting fifteen percent was an aspirational percentage in the housing needs analysis, based on the total number of dwelling units that were projected. And this is based on population projections from Metro relative to those numbers of buildable land that we had. And then the community and council put a goal of fifteen percent of those total units being attached, single-family. And so you also see below a contrast of what the historical trend towards the detached, single-family was in contrast to that goal. So it's quite different. And then again, taking the first slide and carrying it forward a little bit further in those medium-low density and medium-high density residential zones and looking at it not as acres, but a capacity of units. And so taking essentially the three slides together, where you take the fact that most of the buildable acres in RML are in Basalt Creek and the majority of them are included in the sites that these amendments would apply to. And then you look at the total number of estimated dwelling unit capacity. And then you take that hundred-and-fifty-two number. And obviously, not all of the hundred-and-fifty-two units are planned to be built on the subject site, but just sort of doing the math, there certainly is a number of them that suggests that in order to meet that goal, and again, it's a goal, that certainly some share of that hundred-and-fifty-two would probably need to be built on this site, or if not, somewhere else. And I think the one thing I would stop and just clarify with this, and this applies to the housing needs analysis broadly, is that this is based on our existing zoning. This is based on our buildable lands inventory that we came to through our housing needs analysis. There are, of course, other suggestions and prescriptions in the housing needs analysis, like rezoning land, like allowing townhomes as a permitted use in single-family. There are certainly other ways to get to that number. And so I don't want to be construed as suggesting that this is the only way to do so. There's obviously also in the farther future, which again, isn't accounted for in these numbers, but land expansion and greater density at that point in order to meet an overall goal. And then we had had some questions. And I think that the housing needs analysis was, is a little bit hard to get the information, but I think it's there if you if you look for it. It's just a question about household income. And then kind of where does that translate into homeownership opportunities? And what type of housing products one can buy with the incomes that folks here in Twalton have? And I think that, I mean, essentially, you have the conclusion there highlighted in the box, which is that, I mean, that essentially with the incomes that we have in Twalton, where ownership opportunities are being targeted based on the median income of those, of those folks, that they would need a home around two-hundred-and-seventy-five to three-hundred-thousand dollars, give or take, priced in that in that range to be affordable to them. So that is not more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And of course, there are other conclusions in in the housing needs analysis. There's, this is not the only need. There are other needs in general, there are needs for higher-density housing elsewhere in the city and so forth. So but I think that the housing needs analysis does conclude that there is a need based on the income distribution of people that live or would want to live in Twalton, that there's a need for lower-priced housing products that provide entry into homeownership opportunities. And then just to briefly touch on the procedural posture that the council has before them. So because the council has reopened the record in the hearing, you can ask questions of myself or any of the other staff that's available here tonight. You can receive additional evidence and testimony from the applicant, from the public themselves, anyone else who wants to provide anything. The council can, after they've heard from the public and then given the applicant the chance to provide rebuttal, they can choose to close the hearing and record to all parties, much like they did on August tenth. The applicant would then be given the opportunity to have seven days from the close of that record to make a final written legal argument. They can also waive that option. If they choose to elect that option, the council would have to wait to deliberate on the application. So they have to come back to a subsequent hearing at which they could deliberate. And then they'd have to return yet again with with an ordinance at a subsequent hearing after that. And so we can go back to this slide and, of course, any other slides that we have as after we get through questions and everyone else's testimony and application. So that's all I have for my presentation. I'm going to stop sharing the screen, and I'm happy to go back to any of the slides if anyone on the council would like. Happy to answer questions at this point. And of course, it'll be available for additional questions as we go through.
Questions for Steve before the applicant presents? Not seeing any hands up. Let's go on to the applicant and their presentation.
Beaming Mayor, can you hear me?
So I can, Michael.
Thanks. Hi, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Michael Robinson. My last name is spelled R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N. My mailing address is twelve-eleven Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland nine-seven-two-zero-four. So I'm before you tonight with a couple of other folks that are representing the applicants, David Forrest and Mike Anders with Lennar Homes, Gordon Root, who's one of the property owners, and Mimi Dukas with AKS. Mimi prepared the original application, working with staff, and also prepared the revised application for the text amendment that you have before you. While I'm making the presentation, all of us are here to answer your questions. And we do appreciate your reopening the record tonight. And in addition to our talking, we hope that you'll answer any questions that you have of us before you close the record. Obviously, we'd like you to approve the revised text amendment. We think it's, it addresses many of the questions. We hope all of the questions that you asked on August tenth. And we appreciated Steve's staff report. We can talk more about that, Mayor, either during our initial presentation or perhaps in rebuttal. So I might describe in a little more detail what's different about this text amendment than the prior text amendment. So first of all, as Steve noted, we propose that the subdivision, the single-family subdivision option, continue to be a conditional use permit process. The reason we want to do that is twofold. One is it leaves the process, a public process, for your planning commission. Folks have an opportunity to testify, to ask questions. If someone doesn't like the outcome, the matter can be heard by the city council. But after talking with your staff and talking internally, we thought that made the most sense. It's a process the city's comfortable with, that it uses now, and we'd be comfortable with it as well. I think the second reason, and I'll talk about this in just a moment in more detail, is it really gives you an opportunity, it gives us an opportunity, and consequently, its staff and the public, a chance to figure out what makes sense in an individual proposal. It's one thing to say now, when we're looking at a text amendment, what that development ought to look like on those two pieces of property. It's quite another thing to actually have a proposal in front of you. And we think a public conditional use permit process leaves a lot of opportunity to staff, to the applicant, and to the public to come up with a plan that best serves the city of Twalton. And that's really what we're interested in. The second is the fifteen percent minimum, and I want to emphasize the word minimum, requirement for attached product. We've talked with staff about that a lot, are starting, we we propose fifteen percent before your August tenth hearing. And I want to emphasize it's minimum. If during the conditional use process, there's an obligation or a desire to provide more attached housing, and that makes sense, you're able to do it. Fifteen percent is a floor, it's not a ceiling. But again, in the context of a proposal before staff and before the planning commission, it makes a lot more sense to talk about what that percentage ought to look like. I don't want to discourage Council Mayor from talking to us about that percentage tonight. We're happy to talk about it. If you think fifteen percent is not the right amount, please do ask his questions about that. But overall, it probably is is a better process to figure out what the percentage ought to be in the actual conditional use permit process. Third, whatever that final attached product is that's part of an application, seventy percent of it has to be constructed or provided for in the phases prior to the final phase. We talked about that with Steve and Sean. And I know there's a desire to have certainty that you'll get what you're promised. And that's that's the technical way to get there, is you just provide a provision that says that this has, this percentage has to be provided before you get to the final phase. And lastly, at least the Pennington family property has trees on it. And we've heard how important trees are. Trees remain something that can be considered in the conditional permit process. So what you have in front of you is a proposal that's different from the one you considered in August. It makes, it leaves the conditional use permit review process, which is a public process. It requires a minimum of fifteen percent attached product, so it can be more. It requires that seventy percent of that attached product be provided before the final phase. And it leaves trees as something to be discussed during the development. So all of those things, we think, offer a good process to get the city where it wants to go. Let's see what I, what else I had to say, Mayor. And before I go any further, I really appreciated Steve showing those four developments. But I think I'd emphasize, and Mimi or David, Mike, and Gordon might want to chime in on this, the kind of development you're likely to see if you approve the text amendment, it's not going to look like any of those proposals. As Steve said, the application, the text member proposes three thousand square foot lots. The benefit to the city, not just the benefit to the builders, but a benefit to the cities, you're going to get more affordable product, and you're going to get a wider variety of product. Because Mimi has said, right now, we're just stuck with forty-five hundred square foot lots. And stuck may not be the best word to use. You can go up, you can't go down. And so what you get is pretty much the same product. With our proposal, the developers have said that you're going to get, you'll get a variety of products, and you'll get a variety of lot sizes. We'll end up with exactly the same density as you would otherwise get. So whatever density you're striving for in that area, our text amendment will assure the city that it obtains the same density. We think the big difference is that you'll be able to achieve a better-looking development. It's not going to be a monoculture housing development. And we think it will be as affordable as as a solid attached product. The reality is that small lot subdivisions typically are what people want to live in. And we think that it'll be an affordable product as well. So we could, there's probably a lot more we could say, Mayor, and we're happy to do so in the course of answering questions that council has or in responding on the applicant's rebuttal. But for now, we hope that this proposal responds to the questions that council asked on August tenth. And we'd ask you to approve this. If you have a series of questions and you're interested in approving this, but we can't get to this tonight in answering all your questions, you could continue it to October twelfth. We understand that that's dated, that date's available. And our preference, though, is that council make a ten-in decision tonight. And Mayor, as the city attorney, and Steve said before, well, Steve said not the city attorney, we have an earful shot on this one. But as Steve said, before you close your public hearing, please ask us about final written argument, and we'll, we'll tell you then whether we wish to waive it or not. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you for your time tonight. We do appreciate your reopening the record, and we're all available to answer your questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Robinson. Questions for Mr. Robinson and other applicant representatives from the council? Council Pratt?
Hi, Mr. Robinson. You just mentioned that you're going to, you're going to have an affordable product. And I just would like to hear you explain, I mean, a little more detail, how you feel it would be affordable and maybe what size homes these will be. Because, and this isn't, I mean, so much of affordability is just what the market will bear. So I'd like to just hear more of what, how you feel these will be affordable.
Thanks, Council Pratt. So let me, let me say one other thing. You can have affordable product, but you have to have product people want to buy. So affordability in and of itself is important, of course, but having a product that folks want to live in is important. What I'm reporting to you tonight is what, what we heard, the testimony from the applicants on August tenth. I'm, I'd invite David or Mike or Gordon to offer you more testimony, but I'm simply reporting what what the applicants have said and what's already in the public record. As to the size of houses, I couldn't tell you. I just don't know. And maybe, again, that's something that Mike or David from Lennar or Gordon might want to offer testimony on, or even even Mimi, if she's prepared to do that. And I'm not trying to drop this in their laps, but that kind of specific information is probably better coming from them than from me, Council Pratt.
So Valerie, I can address some of that. This is Michael Anders with Lennar. At this point, we don't know the size of the homes because one of the purposes for the text amendment is to get, is to request some modifications so we can get diversity in housing and have not just attached homes and not just detached, single-family homes, but a modify, some, some broad depth of product in order to hit various product types. So your more affordable product is going to be your more dense product, and then it would go up from there. But at this point, we can't answer that because the purpose of the text amendment is to figure out what kind of home sites we can have in order to figure out what will fit on the home sites. And all the setbacks and everything that go along with the text amendment will then drive how dense or not dense and how many different product types we can get.
All right. And then my next questions are for Steve. I guess Steve is the one to answer these. But when we're speaking about the number of multifamily unit, or not multifamily, attached, excuse me, attached units, and then anything regarding green spaces or trees, maybe like as a percentage of the total development? Is that something that has to go to the planning commission? Or is that something, I'm not sure, can we have a saying that to, as we go along this process? Or is this something we ask of this group, if they're willing to do it?
Could you, could you repeat the question? I just, I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just wondering, like, if there's, like, does this need to go to the planning commission? If if we would like to see maybe more attached housing or some surety that there will be green spaces and some trees left? Like, what can we do at this point? Or what can we hear or at, can we ask if that's something that will be done? I'm thinking ignorant here and wanting to learn.
Well, I mean, I think it's obviously a question for the, for the broader council. But I think that you can certainly ask the applicant. I think that Mr. Robinson has presented the idea, which is accurate, that the planning commission does have the ability to levy conditions on, on the small lot subdivision through the conditional use permit. But it's certainly the purview of the council to ask questions of the applicant. But it's certainly the purview of the council to ask questions of the applicant and I think this is the form to do so.
Okay, I guess my question would be back to Mr. Robinson or your group. The applicant here is, if if this request to reduce especially the backlot sites to 10 feet is allowed, are you willing to designate some spaces or save some trees or green spaces to make this a livable community?
Councilor Pratt, let me, let me answer your questions in two ways again. And by the way, I'm not doing emails while we're talking. I'm trying to look at text messages from my client, so not, not being rude. So there, there's two ways to get there, and then I, and then I think Mike or probably Mike can talk about your specifics. But there's two ways to do this. If, if you want to rely on the CUP process, that can be decided in the conditional lease permit process. In other words, in, in exchange for an approval, finding that certain approval criteria are met, you'd have to provide, just using your example, green space, some kind of open space. Or you might preserve trees, or you might use the trees in the design. But you could actually do that through the course of a conditional lease permit process. The other way to do it is to provide some specificity in the proposed text amendment. Now that, my sense is that would take a little more time than we have tonight. It's not impossible, especially if the applicant's willing to consider it. But we'd have to figure out what that would look like. So there's two ways to do it. But I think then what I would suggest is if Mike's willing to do it, maybe he could, could answer your specific questions about what the applicants might be willing to offer, or what they could live with, rather.
I would like to hear that.
Thank you.
Can I chime in here? This is Gordon, and my video is not on, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, the video is muted. It says by the host. So you can either just listen to me or, or not. But I think what is very important at this point is when you're looking at the housing, well, it's been a long process to get here. But when you're looking at the housing needs analysis that has been accepted, not adopted, is what I'm thinking, is that it's a forward-looking document. And I think to really foist upon this project that all the sins of the past for not ending up where we are on an aspirational document from the city's standpoint is simply unfair to this project. But I will say that as far as density, there is no difference. And affordability, the misnomer, and we're a home builder, we're a real estate developer, and the, it's just a misnomer, it's just that attached housing is always less affordable than detached. I do know and can tell you that attached housing is always less desirable of a long-term product choice by homeowners who want to live there long-term. So our job and our mission is to create a diverse mix of housing, which we can deliver to the market, which is attainable, is the word that I tend to use more than affordable. It's attainable for the people who want to come in and live in the city of Twolton. It's going to be much more attainable than what presently exists in other areas. And by having the variety of housing type through the lot dimensional standards that we requested, you're going to see that we got really good in this marketplace in Portland of being able to meet minimum density standards with detached housing. Because you have to have both. You have to have demand as well as the ability to deliver that demand. So I guess those are my comments at this point. So what, one of the things that we'll do is provide certainty, once we have the code text amendment, so we can move forward and come forth to the planning commission with an absolute, here's what we're proposing, rather than looking at rainbows at this point.
Mayor, could I, thank you, Gordon. Mayor, could I go back and, and maybe take one more shot at answering Councilor Pratt's question? Thank you, Mayor. So, and Mike, again, I don't know if you want to chime in, or perhaps Gordon about what might work. So I'm just, I, I appreciate what Gordon had to say, and I've been, I've been thanking Councilor Pratt about the question you asked. So if, if you wanted to be assured, if this body wanted to be assured that certain elements were going to be at least considered, if not precisely specified in this text amendment, should you choose to approve it, what you might think about doing, and we could, you know, if you wanted to go this direction, maybe we could take a break and, and work with your city attorney and Steve on the language. But we might add a condition that requires the express consideration of some kind of open space that's, that's relevant to the proposal for a conditional lease permit. And tree incorporation or retention, again, is relevant to the proposal. I don't think you want an absolute requirement for open space or trees if it didn't make sense in terms of the proposal, and that's why I would suggest some modifying language. But I don't think that's an unreasonable proposal, and it would, it would give this council some assurance that the review body, in this case, the planning commission, would have to look at that before they decided to approve or reject a conditional lease permit application. So that's certainly a possibility in the, in the text amendments before you tonight, Councilor Pratt.
All right. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Thank you.
Other questions for applicant or Steve? Councilor Kellogg?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Robinson's last comment there. So do you have examples of, of other cities that have code that, let's just say, for argument's sake, there's a rebuttable presumption that open space and, you know, forests ought to be considered in each development?
Councilor Kellogg, that's a good question. I'm trying to think offhand on the many cities I've worked with that, that have that kind of language. Some, as you can imagine, are more prescriptive than others. I'm thinking about Frog Pond West and Wilsonville. If you and I were to sit down and look at that code, I'm certain we could find the kind of language that we're talking about tonight. But I'm, I'm guessing if I had enough time, I could probably come up with a number of examples with that kind of specificity. And, and the prescriptive status would, would be all over the, you know, all over the page. Some are more prescriptive than others, but I'm quite certain I could come up with at least half a dozen municipalities that have the kind of language we've just been discussing with Councilor Pratt.
Okay, and then Gordon, if I can ask you a question? Yeah, so the, my primary concern here is obviously what you've called attainability or affordability, that we've stressed in our policy document that we want to have housing that's available, you know, for people, first homes, middle income, the, the missing middles, the buzzword that goes with it. And what I heard you say is that, you know, you're able to do that and still meet minimum density requirements. But my just anecdotal experience, and tell me where I'm wrong. I look at Graham's Landing, you know, one of the examples that was up on our presentation, and those places are selling for 300, 325. And then I look at, you know, Victoria Gardens or in Iowa, and those are selling for 500. So I guess I don't, can you give me a better example of where attached and detached housing has the same price point?
Okay, in Forest Grove, we are finishing a, a project, 187 lots called Gales Creek Terrace. We're building at 16 units an acre detached housing. All right, so we need to let that really sink in. So we do have six-foot setbacks, 10-foot, 12-foot front yards and rear yards. And, I mean, six-foot between the houses and 10-foot in the front yard and 12-foot backyards. And we have a great product type that is very desirable. And this comes right on the heels of another project we did over there called Casey Meadows, which was 101 lots, where we had both attached and detached. And we were able to deliver detached to the market for less money than the attached. Because the attached product was wider, 24 feet wide. And when we were doing some detached, and, and so that's a lot of building space. So when we were doing detached homes, we came up with a couple of really good plans that were 15 feet wide, plus your six-foot setbacks, right? So you're in there, you know, 21 feet, 22-foot width of lots. And those detached homes sold, sold less than the attached. Because we had to make the attached so big because they're, it was wider footprint. We've also done this type of thing in Menville, where we've incorporated a variety of various housing types. And we basically call them detached townhomes. And that is because only 7% want to go out in the marketplace. Sometimes you can see another report says as much as 8%, that once an attached product is their primary housing choice, then a year later, 90% of them want a detached product. People want to be able to open their windows. They want to be able to look outside, have natural light come in on all sides of their home. And we've gotten very good delivering that type of product to the market. We just need the flexibility in the dimensional requirements for the lot sizing. And then watch us deliver a wonderful product mix.
Okay, so two responses. That one, what's the price point on those Gales Terrace detached?
The Gales Creek Terrace price points versus, I think we need to look at the attached versus the detached in Casey Meadows. And Casey Meadows, you're going to see the attached product going about 380,000 now, and the detached around 349,000. So, you know, in response to how do you get to affordable housing? Because that's what we're all talking about here, is a, is an expansion of the urban growth boundary. And that's not the discussion in front of us today, but it is a limited buildable land supply. And we're just talking about, here we are, to come back to this project, we're trying to be able to go from a 4,500-foot lot with an attached product to a 3,000-square-foot lot detached. We're not changing the density. We're going to be able to provide a better layout and a better design that's more desirable for the citizens that want to move into city of Twolton.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Mayor, Mr. Jack with, I'm sorry, I was just going to say at some point, Mr. Jack with Venture had some testimony to offer. Sorry for interrupting.
I unmuted my mic. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think I'm obligated here to talk about, make some comments about the trees. I represent the other builder involved here, the developers, Venture Properties. Our home building firm is Stonebridge Homes. We actually had the northern portion of the site under control, and that's where all the trees are. And one of the issues in terms of responding to the trees is that we're still trying to determine exactly what kind of a site plan we can get, where the flexibility is going to be that would allow us to create some pockets of open space and, and deal with trees on a more creative basis. And that's really what the, in big part with the text amount is, text amendment is all about, does. We've got to get a better sense, I think, of where the opportunities are going to be on the site. And with the limitations under the current code, we really don't have much flexibility.
Okay. Councilor Burris and Grimes, you had a question?
Yeah, I did. Thank you very much. And thank you very much, gentlemen, for your testimony and your information this evening. It's been very educational. I have a question. It's a request to keep something in mind. One of the things that we were hoping to do with our housing needs analysis in addition to making affordable or aspirational priced housing was also to create housing that would be appropriate for seniors. We have a lot of seniors in the city of Twolton, and we have a lot of people that are either downsizing or retiring, and they really want to stay in the community. And as you know, we have a lot of detached, very large, multi-story houses. In the neighborhood I live in, anytime, we have a few single-story houses in and amongst the larger community here. And anytime that one comes for sale, there's always a huge waiting list of people wanting to get, you know, make an offer on it. And I'm hoping that as part of this development, we can keep in mind, and I'm not sure economically how you see this going out, but I would like to keep, you know, options for seniors in mind, if there's any possibility of some sort of modified housing or a single-story unit, something that makes sense for our senior community, so that we can have people that are, you know, retiring and living in places, staying in our community.
Thank you, Councilor Grimes. That's, that's a laudable goal, and it, it, I think that's something that would certainly be worth looking at.
Mr. Forrest, I see your hand up.
I'll take a stab at responding to Councilor Grimes' question. So my parents moved to Twolton, and they currently live behind the high school in a smaller ranch. And so I know I can speak to Lennar in particular. I forgot to introduce myself. David Forrest with Lennar, address 22950 Southwest Lodge Bowl Avenue, Twolton, Oregon. They moved to Twolton for a ranch and as a move-down buyer. And Lennar, I know, it can speak to us specifically. Our thoughts are to provide that variety of housing type. And one of the things Lennar does very well throughout the Portland metro area is provide that single-level home. Those homes, Council Grimes typically require a larger lot, more square footage of a lot. And so I know at least conceptually, once we're hopefully through this process successfully, I know Lennar plans to bring some single-level homes to this community because that's something we do well. We know the market needs, and we're very successful. And there's high demand throughout the metro area for that. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm very, very happy to hear that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll comment too on that from our company. We don't do dedicated senior housing, but we do have a wide variety of single-level plans that we do in, in many of our subdivisions. And so that, you know, as David was saying, is, is kind of a key to serving that market. The other thing is, I don't know much about this development, but there is a senior housing project being planned at the north end of the Horizon site. And I'd be happy to find out more about that and get that information to you, if you're interested.
Mayor, I, I didn't want to talk over anybody. One other thought, if I could, for Councilor Grimes, that, the, the diff, if, if the code stays the same as it is written now, I think it would be very difficult to provide what you're talking about. Because I, I suspect, I mean, I looked at smaller houses for relatives, and they do want single level, but they don't need the kind of house they had when they had all their kids at home, for example. So on, if you don't reduce the lot size and provide this opportunity, you're talking about very large houses on larger lots. So this is, you know, it's not the only reason to do this, and it's certainly, I understand you have a lot of questions, and, and we're not trying to run you over with this. But I think we, we've, your question leads to the conclusion that if you want to provide that type of housing, having a smaller lot option is going to let you more readily do that than having the one-size-fits-all 4,500-square-foot lot, which in today's Portland world is a fairly large lot. So thank you for your question.
Thank you.
Other questions?
This is Dan Cobb, and I'm, I can't raise my hand. I'm on a cell phone.
This is questions for councilors, unless you represent the applicant, Dan.
I do not. Sorry. Thanks.
Councilor Brooks?
So go ahead and mute me, and then I'll, let me know what I can.
Um, sorry, I lost my track there. My, well, I had a couple concerns, I guess. One of my concerns is when we talk about, well, first of all, it's very difficult for me to consider Forest Grove at, at the same market value as Twolton to see single-family detached houses going for less than attached houses. Sounds challenging to me in our area. I think we're right next to I-5, and we've seen our housing prices raise here quite a bit over the last few years. So I know currently, right now, our single-family detached are on market around, some of them, five days. And I think in our neighborhood, attached the housing that we're looking at is does go for less currently in our neighborhood. So I have a hard time doing, I just think real estate's based so much in location. And if I were going to do a comp search for a house and a price to determine value outside of a mile or two of where I live, I wouldn't be doing a very good job. So I want to be thinking about our market here in Twolton. And I think that it's clear that diversity of housing types is something that council's looking for. My concern is, and I heard that the 15% My concern is, and I heard that the fifteen percent is the low end, but I'd like to see a little bit, and I understand paying for the sins of the past. I wasn't on council in the past. I'm on council now. But right now, this is where the present is and where the needs are, and where we see a housing crisis that we're living through. So I'm very concerned about having it be fifteen percent as our lowest. I think that raising the bar a little bit, not that it has to be a hundred percent, but to me, having something that's concrete. I just, I'm curious if we could do consideration around something like that. I'm just not convinced. And I'm very concerned, and I also understand affordability has many different, it's a wide scope of definition. But in Twolton, affordability does happen at three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for some people. So I'm not saying that that's affordable for low-income people, and I understand those differences in affordability. So I want to be really clear about what we're talking about. I know, and I understand market wants detached houses, um, and it's part of the reason, I think, that having those attached, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, why they sit on market maybe thirty days instead of five days. And um, but I don't think there's a bunch of vacant side-by-side homes in our area. So if if you know where they are, let me know. So I just wanted to spell some of what's not quite sitting right with me, and not to be, I think we have a lot of shared desires, which is, I would love to see diversity of housing types. I would just like to see the margins a little bit different, and some dedicated green space to make up for some of the increased density and loss of yards. Yeah, I think that's so far that those are my concerns.
So, Mayor, Councilor Brooks, I'm probably not the only person that should answer your questions, but first of all, I want to say thank you for all these questions. That's what we were hoping to do tonight, and we find it to be very useful. Let me just, let me say two things. One is, I want to go back to your points about what the right percentage should be. We said initially, and I, as a, as a land use lawyer and a former planner who's been practicing for a while, my experience with real life has been, it's much easier to have a proposal in front of you to figure out how it actually ends up. It just is. But you're trying to make law in this proceeding, so I think it's a fair question that you ask, Councilor Brooks. So if you or other councilors think fifteen percent is too low and and aren't entirely satisfied that we can, we that it can be, you can hit the right percentage in an actual CUP, feel free to tell us what you're thinking about. Al and David and Mike and Gordon are all here, and they can respond to that. And I I think that would be useful. You don't have to do it, but it would be useful. In terms of green space, that, as we said earlier, you could certainly graft on to the CUP criteria, very specific direction, that those, that green space entries be considered. But I will just mention, there are competing interests here. Every time you do things, and not you, but every time a a planning program has things like open space or retention of trees, there, and and those are laudable goals. There are costs associated with it. So not that you shouldn't do it. You don't want to sacrifice the aesthetics or livability of a project simply for density and diversity of housing. No one would suggest that. But those are cost issues. So to the extent more of those requirements are imposed on a builder, the costs are gonna go up. The other thing I just wanted to mention to you, we're talking about cost and affordability in a, in one of your neighboring jurisdictions, and I know this because we actually looked at the number, the cost for fees, absent what it costs to take a program, a planning application through the process, and absent the building permit cost, are seventy thousand dollars a door. So there are a lot of issues that go into affordability. And I probably don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I would just mention that it's not just Venture and Lennar trying to build homes that the market wants, that people want to buy. They think they can do it in the same way, in an affordable way, that would match attached. But when we're talking about cost, adding requirements adds cost, and all of the good things we do as a, as a, as planning in this region adds cost. And that's why in one of, one of your neighbors, it's it's seventy thousand dollars. That is a lot of money, and it, that attributes to the lack of affordability. But I, but going back to what I wanted to leave you with, if you have suggestions, Councilor Brooks or other councilors about amendments to the code, please give us a chance. If you have thoughts, give us a chance to respond to that. We're happy to do it. And it may be that Al, Gordon, David, or Mike have some responses to your questions, which I, or in your comments, which I think are valid.
I have a comment that I'd like to make. One of the things that adds more cost to the development process, which cascades up into housing prices than anything, is lack of certainty and time. And time has been the enemy of this project. We've all been sitting here for years and years and years, as long as many of you can remember. But not hitting a decision in a relatively short period of time probably pushes us from a twenty-twenty-one delivery of lots to a twenty-twenty-two, just because of the amount of time that it takes us. So what we're really asking for is certainty and dimensional requirements, so that we can move forward with the planning effort and get in front of the planning commission, so that we can actually have some engineered plans submitted to the city, so we can build a project in twenty-twenty-one instead of twenty-twenty-two. So I implore you to act and understand our perspective is that it's our job to deliver housing to your market. You guys need this housing, and we need it now. And we need not to miss the market site.
I mean, personally, I don't think that, I mean, ideally, when we first look at this, especially as a, as a new council, and I appreciate the time that you've put into your investment. When we, when we look at the numbers, you know, originally, obviously, having attached housing concentrated there would help meet some needs that we have in our community. I personally think that twenty-five percent instead of fifteen percent would make me happy. And I also think that dedication of green space, and I would be feeling very certain about that. I think that um there's, I I know there's opportunities to build full-size houses on those small lots as well, and I know that the market is looking at those lot, a lot of markets not differentiating from lot sizes right now, so there's an opportunity to do very well. And I also do understand that entrepreneurial expenses are built into the cost approach of this work, and that that is something that's figured by by all competitors. So while I understand those needs, I also know it's the cost of doing business. And in my opinion, I I would love to see us do a planned text amendment with concrete goals and help you move forward.
Thank you. We'd like, we we certainly agree with you on moving forward and on concrete goals. And if if there uh, Councilor Brooks and Mayor, if there were an agreement on council on what you'd like to see, we could certainly consider that tonight. I mean, I've heard the twenty-five percent. Mimi, I think, wants to say something.
Before we further on talking about attached versus detached, I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page in regards to this text amendment will not change the density of the project. We are still gonna have the same allowed number of dwelling units on this site, regardless of what size all the lots are gonna be. It's it's how we arrange those lots. It's not gonna change the total project density. So you're gonna get the same number of dwelling units regardless. So I just, I I want the the council and the public to understand that the, while we're talking about little pockets of density across the site, the total project density is the same. I think that's an important policy distinction for everybody to be aware of.
I guess to that point, then, um, well, first, I'm seeing if we, if we reduce the lot size from forty-five-hundred to three thousand, then instead of building two houses, you're gonna be able to build three properties. So I guess I'm back to where if we have a little more, if the density is the same, and we build a little higher percentage of attached units, doesn't that give us a little more room to add some green spaces into this? I I mean, I'm just looking for a little more attached housing and some green spaces to, and I know there's a cost involved, but I this is a long-term thing, and people are gonna live here, and it needs to be, you know, a community that has these features that make Twolton what it is.
And that's exactly what that conditional use permit is gonna do. It's gonna give the planning commission a chance to balance out the um, amount of small lots, the amount of attached lots, the amount of large lots. Because as you're balancing those out, if you've got small lots, you're gonna have to have some big lots, or you have some open space or a combination thereof. You're starting to have a lot of levers that are moving in in how that development package moves forward. And I, from what we heard at our last hearing, that's part of why the conditional use permit was an important part of how this needs to move forward, is that extra level of discretion, so that the levers are moved in the correct way. So that's, that's part of why this is um, coming forward as a, as a total package for you.
If I could just add one piece to that. So so while one option is for the the uh, planning commission, the council also has the opportunity through this process to outline what it wants the the planning commission to consider. So so I would just remind the the council of that as well.
Mayor, this is, this is Mike. I I think what the city attorney just said is very important. You can certainly do that. But we, it sounds like we're we're closing in on some issues that are important to council, green space and the amount of assured attached product. Um, and as Mimi said, we get the same density regardless. So it's just that you get a, you get a product or a project, frankly, that's gonna have a wider variety of lot sizes and unit types. It's gonna have more, uh, it's gonna have a broader appeal, we think. So I I know, Mayor, you need to hear from the public. I don't know that there are other questions for us. We're happy to answer them. But maybe if you'd like to, after you've heard from the public, uh, if your council has uh, direction for us, maybe make those suggestion to us, and we could, we could respond to them tonight if you'd like to.
Sure.
Thank you.
Right. So I've got two points, because like you were saying, Mr. Robinson, I want to get to the public, because they're waiting patiently. Going to the point of, I, certainty has come up a few times. I too want certainty, fifteen percent minimum. It's just a minimum. I want certainty of what I'm gonna get. So as you just alluded to, Mr. Robinson, uh, we might ask for more than fifteen percent as a minimum. I also would like to, I drove, it was a beautiful weekend, so I took my motorcycle out and drove Cooper Mountain and Sexton Mountain. And as you all know, it's getting built up out there like nuts. And so stopping into some of those places, I allude, it seemed to me that most of those developments are pretty similar to what we're looking at here. And Lennar's uh, Homes had to sign up. The houses were starting from the mid-five-hundred thousands uh, on those kind of sized houses and lots around Mountain View High School. And townhomes were starting at three-hundred thousand, but that was not Lennar. It's a competing builder. So getting back to Steve's point about affordability, um, I'm assuming since that area is very desirable, just as Twolton is, that these price points might be the same thing we're looking at in Salt Creek. So based on Steve's numbers, that'd be very difficult for most folks to get to the mid-five-hundred thousands for a home. And, you know, the sweet spot might be three-hundred thousand dollars for a townhome, which I'm seeing building and selling like crazy around Mountain View. Um, so to the point where townhomes don't move, that I, I'm I'm seeing a move up in that area. And as far as the green space question, as you're alluding to, uh, Mr. Robinson, I think it's, and Councilor Brooks said, I'd like to see more of that, because when you're looking at a housing community, it's not just price that people are looking at. They're looking at parks, schools, the location of the home, and the community safety that they're gonna be buying into into this community. All those things wrap into a price in addition to the hard costs you you're you're speaking of. So I'm not gonna go on and on here, because it's getting late and later, but those are some of the things I'm looking at in my mind. So I want to now take an opportunity for anyone who, uh, public would like to testify in support of this planned tax amendment. Is there anyone there, Bates, in person or?
Sure, Mayor. The two that we have, uh, that have notified me are Kelly Kurth and uh, the person on the phone, which I believe is, he said, Dan Cobb.
Is in favor of it.
I don't know if they're for or against.
Okay, so those folks, if you could raise your hand or acknowledge or give a sign to Bates that are in favor of the PTA. I see, looks like Kelly Kurth is is in favor, so go ahead.
Hi, uh, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you, uh, again for opening this up. You know, I guess my name, my wife is the email kind of name. My name is Robinson also, so Michael. My name is, first name is Robinson, but I attest that it's a good name, good. So one of my comments, you know, is either, you know, directly for the the council, and I've submitted some uh, comments earlier um, through Tabitha. But, you know, the, I guess the first thing that you want to look at is, you know, are these kind of places, is this an area that you yourself would want to live or could live, you know, conceive of living there? And that seems to be a a good litmus test for when you're looking at, you know, whatever kind of uh, lot sizes or house or whatever. I know it always depends on, you know, your time of life and, you know, your downsizing or whatever, family or not, and how big of a house you need, but just to think of what kind of community am I moving into, you know, that's a big thing. And so I think with that, a lot of my concerns that might, you know, uh, be centered around the livability, and I think some other people have mentioned this too, that, you know, you have a space that's not just an open space with swing sets and and teeter-totters, but you've got some areas that have maybe some established trees already. You know, I know you can always plant things and trees develop later on, but in terms of having a forest or something where you've got some established kind of land, that that makes such a big difference. And I think in my earlier comments, you know, I mentioned some of the Greenways in Dakota, uh, Indian, uh, some of those other spaces where there's some established trees already, and it really, Iback Park, it makes a big difference when you've got something already there, not just an open field. You know, although that is also important. So, you know, whether or not you want to live there yourself, you know, being close to attached housing or more dense, you know, sometimes you're willing to compromise when the house and your neighbors are getting along and they're happy. They're just a happier community. So I'd like that to be, you know, a real consideration in terms of, you know, how you propose something, and for the city council and the planners, that, you know, what you accept in terms of a livability aspect, you know, would you want to live in this place yourself? Just to attach on this last thing, you know, there's two more things. As one is, you know, I I realize you can't really, you know, chicken or the egg, you know, you can't really show some housing sizes or, you know, what are some major uh, housing options until you get this wording approved. Um, it might help that sometimes you provide some examples then to help us kind of accept this or not, um, rather than we okay this, and then something that we might not have wanted has gotten already passed through. My last comment is, you know, it would be nice that, uh, you know, not just grafting on some ideas, but, you know, concepts or possibilities, having more open space, green space area, is, you know, really committing or saying that, yes, we will, you know, add some of those. Maybe if, you know, the density in some of that space goes up, allowing you to have more space that you could designate for a livability concepts. So with that, that's, you know, a lot, lot to speak of. I know that some of these issues have been touched on a lot tonight. Thank you all for your Thank you all for your, your, you know, openness to discussing this and your, uh, you know, patience. So thank you very much for having this open to the public.
Well, thank you for your comments. Do I have anyone else in the public who would like to testify in support of the PTA? Go ahead and yell out because I can't see everybody. All right. I'll now open the floor to those opposing the PTA. And I think there is one gentleman.
Hi, yeah, this is Dan. Is it my turn?
Yeah, it's your turn now, Dan.
All right. Um, I live across Norwood Road and, um, the, the lot sizes in the area there are seven to nine thousand square feet. For me to, to see the lot sizes in this development drop all the way down to three thousand is jarring and unimaginable. If you look at the, the homes in the Beaverton area up towards Intel and Nike that are sitting on those kinds of lots, they invariably turn over to becoming rental properties over time. Any of them, them. And as time goes on, more and more of them do. Most of them don't have homeowners associations. And so you have investors from across the country and, and money pouring in from other places, even outside of the country that go into depressed markets where homes have deteriorated and they snap them up and they, and they further deteriorate. Homes of this size on those sized lots generally do not maintain themselves very well. The owners don't because they become rental properties. Um, I've seen that over and over and over again. And I can say that because I've purchased some of those properties during the last decline. I maintain mine better than that, but it's really disgraceful to see homes in the area really collapse. I, I mean roofing and siding and paint sidewalks, just trees uplifting the sidewalk. It's just unimaginable. But that's what happens in these neighborhoods more often than not, in my experience. The, um, the notion that you've got to have ten units per acre speaks to the idea that Tuolton is trying to apparently make up for housing and zoning issues that they didn't really pay much attention to in years past and so they're trying to compensate for that. And I, I heard something along those lines in, in this meeting and past meetings, you're trying to compensate for that by increasing density in one fell swoop. And, um, so that's unfortunate. People who, who live across Norwood from that development are sort of going to pay a penalty for that because of the, the traffic volume. It's just not fair to us. Ten units per acre is far too many units, far too many houses. And the traffic volume coming, as I've said before, up and down Norwood Road and, and Boons Ferry, it's already, it's already insane. COVID notwithstanding. Once we get out of COVID, if you throw another, I think it was upwards of a hundred and fifty units in there. I mean, you're going to make egress for us just about impossible, very, very difficult, especially if we're trying to head down, you know, towards into town. The construction project itself, a, as I've mentioned before, there are a lot of trees back there. There is an access road. It doesn't say no pet trespassing. I walked into it. All the trees are labeled with little tin foil markers and they're all numbered. And I counted upwards of sixty thousand, I didn't count them myself. The foils indicate that there's upwards of sixty thousand trees there. The, the energy, just the time, the traffic, logging trucks, massive logging trucks moving out of that area during school hours in the winter. I, I can't, I can't imagine. It's, it's, it's unbelievable. The, the other thing is, uh, well, there, there's a, there's a number issues. The other one was homeowners associations. If you think your properties are going to be reasonably well priced, think again, because you're going to need an HOA in there. And, and then if you set aside green space, which I really encourage you to simply not jacking such a high density in the area. But if you set aside green space and you've got three thousand square foot lots, you've got to make up for the density you're looking for by, by having a whole lot more um, common wall units, you know, townhomes, things like that. That's, that's going to basically make Norwood Road row houses. Again, aesthetically, that's grotesque. I, I just feel you're doing a gross disservice to people who live in the area in so many ways. You're not considering the people who live there. You're not considering the traffic issues for people who live there. You're not considering the decline in the overall value of these properties versus people who live there. So I really ask that you think about the citizens of Tuolton, not the people you're, you know, out of town builders, people who want to move to the area. I'm real sorry, but housing is expensive. It really is expensive. And you've got so many properties that have been sucked up and turned into rental property across this whole country by very high powered investors that they have driven them off the roof. Right? That's not just the fault of you or me or the city of Tuolton. That's just the reality of it. So if you think you're going to solve the nation's housing crisis by making homes really inexpensive in Tuolton, you're ignoring the citizens who live here. And you're not going to solve that problem because three hundred K, that's fine. That's, this is that today's real estate market. Three hundred K for a, a townhome at today's interest rate. Interest rates right now are on the floor. They're absolutely on the bottom. They are not going to go down any lower. They're going to go up. They simply cannot stay where they're at forever. So if you think you're opening up those homes to entirely new market, that new market is going to be blocked right out of the market as soon as rates jump by a half a point or a point. And they will. We've been through this cycle before and rates so many times. They're not going to stay where they're at forever. This cannot go on if it is. So keep that in mind. What you think is a three hundred thousand dollar home today will effectively be costing a new young buyer a whole lot more money when rates pop. And if you throw in an HOA. I, I mean, I understand you want to develop that property and I fully get it. I, who, who wouldn't? Okay. It's right on the edge. There it is. It's pristine property. But I think that trying to cram ten units per acre there is unthinkable. It, it makes no sense. You cannot deal with the guilt of some kind of notion that you owe it to the world to solve the housing crisis by turning that hunk of land, twenty eight acres into extremely high density housing. It, it makes no sense. And again, as I'm saying, I'll shut up here in a second. It simply ignores the aesthetics and the livability and the quality of life for people who already live there. And I'm done. And I really do appreciate you listening. I'm sorry that I was a little bit frontal here. And, and I do appreciate your time. Thanks much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to testify against the PTA? Okay, hearing none. Okay. Any questions of council, further questions for council? Or from council, I'm sorry, to the applicant, to city staff? All right. So Mr. Robinson asked about a possible discussion of things we might envision in a revision of this.
Would you like your, Mayor, I apologize. Would you like your applicant's rebuttal first or would you like to go ahead and then we'll offer rebuttal?
Go ahead. Just do the rebuttal first.
I'll do, thank you, Mayor. I'll do this very.
Mr. Robinson, excuse me, just one second. I want to clarify. Gordon, is this one going to have an HOA or, or is it expected to?
Absolutely. They have to and it will.
Thank you.
CC and ours are enjoying.
I, I'm glad you asked the question, Councilor Kellogg. Thank you. I'll make this fast, Mayor. So first of all, thank you everyone for your questions tonight. We thought they were very helpful and we appreciated the chance to engage you in this conversation, which is important. This is an important piece of development in Tuolton. So just emphasize what we proposed, conditional use permit process, fifteen percent minimum open space. And I do have a proposal to increase that, Council Brooks, and I'll, I'll do that before I conclude rebuttal. Um, also open space. Thought it was important that Lenar said they have a single level, uh, product that they can build that addresses, uh, Council Grimes questions about seniors. Um, I want to emphasize again that, that we think this text amendment provides ultimately a wider variety of price point, housing type and lot size than the current, uh, text. Either you get attached or you get forty five hundred square foot lots. We're offering something that provides frankly for more creativity. And I think Gordon made a good point. It's going to be a better looking development. Let me just respond very quickly to Dan. I apologize. I didn't catch his name, but I appreciated him talking tonight. And so I think I really only have a couple of points to make. Whatever we build there, the city's already set the density. That's not going to change and it's going to be far different from seven to nine thousand square foot lots. I grew up on a half acre lot and you just don't have those anymore. And whether you should or not is not what we're here to decide. We're here to decide how do we do this well that serves the city's needs and citizens. Secondly, I want to make a point Dan made about interest rates. He's right. They're at historic lows. Gordon said he'd like to get to this project in twenty twenty one. The sooner you can get to the project, the sooner people can buy the houses, lock in the low rates, and that translates to more affordability. It just does. You're making fewer interest payments or less interest payments on your, on your mortgage. So delaying this, I think Gordon made an excellent point, delaying this a year or more, it's going to increase costs because Dan was right. Interest rates are unlikely to stay where they are. And I was trying to think if there's anything else, I thought he that he said that I thought should respond to. Oh, I, I, I do want to say this. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of local developers over the years and many of the small lot projects, uh, that I, I've been involved with looked good when they were built. People put a lot of thought into them. They did have open space, Council Brooks, and they've retained that appearance. Uh, and it's not just due to HOAs. And, and one last thing, and then I'll go on to our proposal. HOAs, having HOA is simply a management device to assure that a project or a development is managed well. The assessments have to do with, with whether you're maintaining front and side yards, whether you have common tracks that have to be maintained. And typically, I'll just use as an example, the townhome project I live in. We have to do a tenure reserve study and every year I'm on the board. Every year we have to look at whether we need to increase the assessment. So my assessment is just about twenty percent of my monthly payment. Because for attached product, you've got it, you've got to figure out, are we going to maintain the skin of the project over the years, the roof, the fences? You don't have those same issues with single family detached. We could talk about that obviously much more, but the point is single family detached, I'm sorry, single family attached often has more costs associated with it. So Mayor, let me, let me, and I've been texting with my clients, so if I, if I say anything wrong, they can raise their hands and tell me I'm wrong. On, on green space, we would, we would certainly agree to a provision saying there has to be an open space component. Um, but you leave the amount and location of the CUP, but should, you should encourage that component to include some trees. That seems to get to both points at once. You, you could try and pick a percentage. That's tough to do in the abstract. So perhaps direction as Sean suggested to the planning commission about what a successful CUP application has to include might be a better way to go. But if you thought about a percentage and wanted to take the time to discuss that, we could. Uh, Councilor Brooks, I'll address this directly to you, although I'm speaking to the entire council. On the attached, we, we could certainly go to twenty percent. The problem with going to twenty five is it, it starts to disrupt what we think makes sense out there. And it's not that, that we couldn't get to a higher percentage if we had an actual plan, but agreeing to a higher percentage, say twenty five in the abstract, as Al pointed out, makes things difficult. My understanding is Lenar and Venture could agree to twenty percent. So we would hope that at the end of tonight, if you have more questions that you want to spend time on, we're happy to answer them and maybe we come back on the twelfth. But otherwise, we think what we've given you tonight is worthy of your approval, especially if you change the code to require twenty percent minimum attached and require an open space component using trees. Um, there may be other things and we're happy to answer questions, Mayor, should you have them. But with that, I'll conclude. Um, and we would like you to, to decide it tonight. And, uh, Mayor, I know you're going to ask me, but I, I don't think we have an objection to waiving a final written argument tonight, so you can deliberate to a tentative decision. And thank you all for your questions and for the time you spent with us tonight.
All right. Uh, councilors, questions or questions for Mr., questions for Mr. Robinson with his suggestion? Councilor Pratt.
Um, thank you for the compromise. Um, I'm wondering, um, hearing the one person speak and I've read this with, um, comments from community members, i- is there any possibility then in addition to some open green space that you'd be willing to leave, um, much like Horizon School did, um, some of those trees right along, um, Norwood?
I should let Al talk. I mean, what, what we suggested a moment ago, Councilor Pratt, is in the open space component, you include trees. So in the CUP process, you'd figure out where does that make sense? Maybe it is along Norwood, but maybe when you actually look at a plan, it makes sense elsewhere, but it's not unreasonable to ask that, that the two be, be married, so to speak, so that you're achieving both goals.
May I speak to that?
Sure.
You know, we have considered that to this point, uh, leaving something along, uh, Norwood. Part of the problem is that those trees are set back pretty far already. And so we're not exactly certain exactly, you know, how much benefit we'd be able to get up there. Again, it kind of comes back to if we had the ability to come in with a specific plan, uh, I think there are a number of creative things we could do and, um, hopefully we could do something along Norwood, but it may, that may not be the best place to do it when we actually get into it. Uh, but, uh, we're certainly open to, uh, to working on that.
Yeah, I guess where I'm stuck here is I, I, I feel like I want some solid answers here, not just leave it all up to the CUP and I don't want to move forward until I feel like, and I think we're getting there. But, um, I just feel like we, I want some definitive, um, things here with the green spaces. And I think we're working on that with the attached housing too. So we feel comfortable as a council moving forward.
Well, we've given you a percentage on the, uh, the attached, uh, that we can, you know, you can respond to that. And as far as the trees, again, I, I just am, I'm kind of at a loss as to what the best way to do that is. Certainly we can do something. But where that's going to be, whether it's going to be along Norwood or there's some other portion of the site. Just in the interest of good planning, we've got to have the ability to, to, to take a look at that. Now, can we talk about a, a percentage of that? I'm not, I'm not sure. That's kind of, that's a tough, tough call at this point, but we can think about it.
Councilor Pratt, if, if, if the council were to consider and adopt language requiring open space and the trees be a component of that, is, is that not uh, specific enough absent a precise plan before the council?
Yeah, I guess my only issue, that, that's great. My only issue is like, um, I don't want to see like, um, you know, a hundred square feet because that kind of leaves it open. We're, you know, I'm saying, I just, that's where I'm having the issue is the, and I know it's hard to define this because you don't want to, it's hard to say a percentage or anything, but something that means it'll be decent.
You, you want, you want something that's, that's a minimum and that's usable?
I suppose, yes.
Can, can I?
Pratt is saying part of the process for me and I think other counselors is once we derive, as, uh, Sean said, clear direction to the planning commission on what our vision is for the CUP and our desire for the CUP, it's out of our hands at that point. It goes to the planning commission and planning commission and city staff work together and they can grant the CUP. It never comes to us. So this is our chance to get what we want as a minimum and get our message across to the planning commission that this is our minimum. And if this isn't the applicant's, if the applicant doesn't come back with what we want as a minimum, then we're not going to give them the opportunity to do a CUP. So to me, this is like you're saying, it's our chance to give clear direction to the planning commission and work out these details so that you do have that certainty when it goes to the planning commission that you can work these details out. They go through and gets done timely, so the developers can start building as soon as possible.
Mayor, does, does does the council, I, I, you know better how to do your process than, than, than me, obviously. Do, do you want to do, I, I'll just throw this out. Do you want to do an, an sort of a, an informal poll on particular amendments to the text amendment? So you could get a sense of what make, makes sense. And because the hearing is still open, you could ask us questions about whether we can, whether we can make that work?
Uh, Council Morrisfield, you said.
Yeah. So, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Robinson. I, I want to just clarify a couple of things because I'm, I, I think I'm getting frustrated here and, and Mr. Robinson, thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for cooperating with us and, and working through us. But if I understand this correctly, what you're bringing to the council is something that our twenty forty plan has envisioned. And that you're trying, or at least to me, from where I sit, you appear to be working with us to try to give us a variety of price points and a variety of different things that we want. But under the current code, if I'm not mistaken, you could go and I, um, it sounds like I don't. But under the current code, if I'm not mistaken, you could go and I, um, it sounds like I don't um, recognize my own neighbor, but when David Forrest gave his address, we're we're literally a couple of houses apart from each other. I'm trying to figure out where you live, Dave. Um, Victoria Gardens, as was already mentioned by somebody, it is not cheap here. These are not starter homes. Um, and these are, the, there's a lot of families here. We certainly, it's a great neighborhood, a lot of kids and you know, it it sells really well because it's close to the school, but it's nothing like what the, um, what Mr. Root has brought forth to the council in terms of giving us something that we want. In addition, we now have a new, and all due respect to the one, uh, resident who spoke, we have a new demon we're battling with the state dictating that our zoning codes are no longer our zoning codes, that if they want to build a duplex, they're entitled to build a duplex without even asking permission. And so what am I missing here that we're trying to, and I I appreciate that conditional use permit, and the idea that as those plans come forward, we get to the Planning Commission and the community, and certainly councillors go, as far as I know, you can speak at a um, at a planning commission meeting if you wanted to, I suppose. Um, to, that public input will then dictate what those green spaces will be, what the issues are with them, and what that housing mix is going to be. So what what am I missing here with respect to what they can do without even coming to council versus what they're trying to do and working with council?
So who's that question for, Paul?
Probably to Steve.
Well, well, Counselor Morrison, I think you make some excellent points. I mean, I I think that your question is also to the broader council. I think that, um, you've made your points amply clear. I think the only thing I might clarify on is that I'd probably suggest that the councillors not attend the Planning Commission um, and testify on the application that they might hear then on appeal. Um, that would be the only point that I would.
We'd waive that, Steve.
That's fair enough. But yeah, otherwise, I I think that, um, I think I concur with what you're saying. I I mean, the council sounds like they have differing viewpoints on on how well the applicant has satisfied the goals that you all mentioned, and so I think that, um, I concur that that they've, that they've engaged with the council and that they've, um, shown a willingness to make some compromise. And so I guess that that with all due respect, I would turn it to the broader council and
Mayor, we have a proposal on open space if you'd entertain it.
Sure.
So in in this, I think this is a pretty common number, but Mimi would know better than me. It, Counselor Pratt, I understand your desire. I understand your desire for, um, for certainty, so we could offer five percent of gross acreage. And you remember, you've got two ownerships, so you're going to have Lennar doing one and Venture doing the other, five percent of gross acreage. So on the Venture Development, it's about one point two five acres. On the Lennar property, it's about one point six five, very close to three acres overall. And that's gross acreage. It's not net, obviously, so we're taking that off the top before we do our residential development. And if council direction were to include consideration of of using, putting that in a location, you could give, you could give much, as much direction, Mayor and Counselor Pratt, as you want. Maybe you could include direction that that include, uh, some of the trees, so that the location had the dual purpose of providing usable open space, um, as well as preserving some of the trees. So we could, I think, and I'm just checking my text, both of the developers believe that's a reasonable accommodation.
Okay, and then I just have to ask, but in that three acres, would you be excluding any areas for stormwater drain off that you would have to put in?
So you're, so let me ask it another way. You're asking if the stormwater ponds would be outside of the three acres?
Correct.
I, that's a good question. I I don't, I don't know. Some of it's a function of of topography and then where you put the the open space. Um, but my sense is you're asking, you're asking for open space, that usable open space, not not a pond.
Correct.
Yeah, it would be outside the storm facility. Um, but I I want to be careful about how you define usable. If if there's open space that's for tree preservation.
That's, that would be usable.
Right, there's limitations for for recreation, you know, it's, people have different perceptions of what that means, so tree preservation would be, um, part of that open space preservation.
Are are you saying like as opposed to, it be something, people go walk through the trees as opposed to a park kind of?
Yes. As opposed to Playground, it may be just a a tree grove.
Which has, which has value in of it, in and of itself for
Well, definitely.
Yeah.
We can't survive without trees.
Great.
Okay, I think we're getting there. I'd like to hear from other councillors of how they feel.
Because I can't, is, um, I'm looking for my Council Reyes. I can't see it.
I I know, sorry, just one of those days. Um, I just, I've been processing a lot while everyone speaks, and I hear everyone's comments, the public, the applicant or city. And I just keep thinking about my people, the people that, or someone like me who, um, started off at a condo that was attached, and I just remember the feeling of buying something for me that was by myself, that I own. Um, and even if the outside did not belong to me, or the wall next, the other wall on the other side belonged to someone else, the feeling of owning that property was just, it it was empowering, uh, as someone that first, I'm home buyer from my family in the US as an immigrant. I mean, it was like the dream. And it was just this little condo, so I keep thinking about that. I keep hearing about uh, some of the comments that came in that said, you know, housing is expensive, so be a, you know, kind of some, something like that, you know, so that effect, and it just, I'm almost heartbroken because, um, I feel like we are being, um, we're thinking about probably, you know, everything, but there are just families out there that are waiting to buy that home, however that looks like. Whether it's just four walls, uh, whether it's just, um, or detached, attached, however that is. They're just wanting, they live here, they've lived here for many years, they're renting, they're paying eighteen to two thousand dollars a month of rent, and they're just hanging in there because they want to buy here in Tuolumne, and I keep thinking about all that. And, um, and I just, it just, uh, somebody used the word attainable. I really like that. I think that that's what I I think what I'm looking for, I, homes that are, that people can buy and feel happy and 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 I think when people own something, they tend to care for it because because it's going, they could be there a long time. So, so that's what I'm, I was thinking. Those are just some of, some of the thoughts, and I know I'm bringing all this to you, but I'm just thinking of all that. That's been through my head. I'm 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 seeking for my community, and I'm thinking what they've said to me about buying in Tuolumne, expensive. When that, those properties were being built on, um, Sagard, and I think it was sixty fifth or over there by the hospital, and it, and I remember seeing, starting at three, in the three ninety nine, and then it went to four fifty, and then it went to finite, and it's like, holy cow. What can afford this? I mean, people that come here and work here at Fred Meyer, they come in, they live here, and they work at the little, you know, stores here, uh, but the manufacturing companies, they're never going to be able to afford a house like that, ever. And so, um, so I'm thinking of all those families, and I'm thinking of what can be provided. What can I do as a city councillor to to voice their opinion, to voice their, their wanting to live in a home that they own? And and that's what I'm, those are things that are crossing through my mind right now as everyone speaks, and I'm just listening. Um, I honestly think, I I don't know, I don't, I I I don't know the solution. I do know that, um, that whatever we build, uh, is attainable for these families, that whatever we do, we we, you know, we provide to, you know, housing for that first starting, that single person that probably doesn't have a partner that can help her pay the mortgage or anything like that, or him, you know. So those are things that I, I feel like we need to, we we think, and and that's diversity, that's equity. That's thinking about equity lens, thinking about all those families, all those people. And I I, that's what I want. I I don't know how we're going to get there. I I hear a lot of numbers, percentages, and I just I'm thinking of, how do we get there? How do we become equi- equitable that we are providing, maybe not to everyone, but at least some families, some people, some, some single, uh, um, person up there, or or a, or a female widow who is now in her seventies, you know, or something like that, or a couple, old couple, and I just, I don't know. I, that's, Mayor, that's, that's what I'm thinking. That's where my heart is, that's where my brain's processing, and all of us have a decision to make, all of us are part of that, to make that happen, and and how do we come together? And, uh, it makes, make that happen. I I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm still I'm processing all that information, so that's where my comments are. I I hope that I brought into a little bit of perspective from someone who started off like that, and I consider myself, um, that I'm two, maybe couple of months away from being back in those homes that are just attached in a condo, you know, because we don't know. And so I'm not that, I'm not a wealthy person. I, my home's not paid off, you know, all that stuff. So I I think about all that, so. Um, I I don't know how we're going to do this. I don't know how we're going to fix it, how we can be equitable and 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 generational build homes that are for everyone, so. I I hear it, and I'm still processing. Maybe something will click, maybe you know, we'll come up with a a good coming ground compromise that we all can, uh, help one another and help those people that are looking for housing right now.
Thank you. So question, a process question for Sean. So I know there's always the opportunity to continue the hearing. Uh, but I just want to get a temperature check, uh, from councillors and the applicant, because um, is this something, and this is a question for you, Sean. If the applicant wanted to go back and, uh, take in consideration of the comments tonight, and the applicant's question of the councillors getting together, uh, in some fashion, or relaying what they want to staff, uh, could we use the two weeks between now and a possible continuance of the hearing to resolve these items rather than going for hours tonight? So how's that process work?
So, um, the the council as a group couldn't get together, uh, through this without us, you know, re-noticing it as a both a public meeting as well as, uh, a continuation of this hearing. Um, the the, I mean, I I know it's getting late, but probably the best way is to get some clear direction from the council on what they're looking for tonight, uh, and then maybe hear back from the applicant on whether or not they're willing to uh, consider that or or how they want to go forward with that. Um, and and then maybe come back on at the next meeting on the twelfth. Uh, at the same time, the the applicant may may decide differently, but but at least having that back and forth, to me, makes sense tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sean. Um, I need to put these back on so I can read. Um, I think our preference would be to hear what direction council might give us tonight, and I think it's been extraordinarily good, and Council Reyes, thank you for your comments. We're, we're not unaware of that, and we want to try and help meet the kind of goals you described. Um, we have a lot of competing obligations. But if council could give us more direction, we've gotten some pretty good direction from councillors, Brooks and Pratt on open space and, uh, attached product. If you give us additional direction, we could, um, come work up an additional uh, proposal, get that to you in time to get it in your packet, and come back to you on the twelfth of October for a continued hearing. And I think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, you're right, Mayor, it's, what is it? It's, it's almost nine thirty. Um, so if we had more direction for anything else you want us to consider, we would appreciate that, and we'll come back to you on the twelfth.
That sounds good. So let's do the round robin here. I see Council Brooks's hand up.
I just want to say thank you for, um, raising your box, your fifteen percent to twenty percent. First of all, and considering, um, the green spaces, and um, of course, I'd like to see a pocket park in there as well, and with that, and I also favor, um, coming up with a planned text amendment. Uh, even tonight, if we can, and give these guys certainty and move forward. That's my two cents.
Counsel Kellogg?
Yes, I mean, I I share Counselor Brooks's sentiment that we're all here. I think we're awfully close. Um, I don't, you know, see everybody's head nodding all at once, but, you know, there are competing notions here, right? And and one of the things that really bothers me is the uncertainty of where we're going to be two or three years from now with respect to our zoning and what we do for development. Um, Mr. Root's comment about, you know, trying to make up for all the sins of the past with this one development struck hard, and and I think, you know, the the willingness that the developers have shown to, you know, kick their number up from fifteen to twenty to accommodate the open space, to accommodate the trees. Um, I I feel like they are really making an effort, uh, so that we can make a decision tonight. And from what I've heard, you know, I on balance, I am convinced that we can put forth good enough criteria to satisfy, um, you know, our needs and our policy as reflected in the housing needs analysis, and then let the developer and the planning commission, um, really kind of figure out the ultimate details about, you know, where does this tree go and where does that sidewalk go? Um, so I'm, I'm prepared to make a decision tonight, um, and I will leave it up to the rest to to express their opinions.
Counselor Pratt.
Yeah, I too would like to, um, thank you for working with us here. Um, I'm good with the twenty percent and the three acres, but I would, um, additionally, like Counselor Brooks, to see room for a pocket park with, like, at least a little play structure kind of thing. Our little, or in there, and then I would be good to go.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah, I, so far, the comments I've heard from the other councillors, the thing I want to clarify, uh, Mr. Robinson, is you had mentioned have my notes here, green space including trees. And I put fifteen percent, and then I put a question mark, because it wasn't clear if you were agreeing to fifteen percent green space. Um, because then later on in the conversation, we got into the one point two acres and one point six acres. And so do do those three acres, I'm, I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but it, so are we talking fifteen percent green space? Is that what I understood?
Counsel Morrison, we're talking about five percent open space slash green space, which is, uh, one point six five on the lower property, one point two five on the upper, so it's about three acres. So it's five percent, not fifteen percent.
Okay, uh, very well, very well, could have been a typo on my part, too. I have fat fingers, you know.
Well, I might have said fifteen, and if I did, I apologize. Um, so it's five percent, and we are willing to put in a play structure in within the the five percent green space. So you're going to get trees, a play structure, and five percent, uh, gross acreage for open space.
Yeah, I appreciate everything, and again, as as already been stated by their councillors, really appreciate your willingness to, uh, work with us on what our goals are, um, and and to create what, you know, is is something I think that's good, good for the community.
Uh, Council Reyes.
Yeah, I too, yeah, I too agree with the, I think twenty percent sounds decent. I feel that um, we're compromising, and we're all kind of coming into some kind of agreement. I, um, I think they, like I said, I mean, I I just want to, I want us to start uh, seeing something. I really feel that we have to, um, I I want to see, I want to see housing for for the community, and and that's, that's where, if twenty percent is what is out there, and the councillors, my fellow councillors are also in agreement, then yeah, I, I'm in agreement too.
Okay, thank you. Counsel President Grimes.
Thank you. Um, no, I'm very pleased with the progress that we're making this evening. Um, I'm very appreciative of moving the open space to five percent. I think that that's terrific. Um, I appreciate the, um, contributing the idea of a contributing the idea of a small, like a place structure or a park. I would also like to put forward the idea of maybe in lieu of a place structure or in addition, depending on how the space works out. Some sort of a trail or a walkway through the development that would be off-street so that people and perhaps children on bicycles could take a, you know, a ride through the development. In addition, as, or as part of the open space, I do appreciate that. I support the idea of moving to twenty percent attached. My only concern, however, with that is a comment that Mr. Root made about HOAs and common walls structures with them being wider and the maintenance cost being higher, I don't I don't want to move up the number of common walls or shared wall dwellings, and then have those particular dwellings have a higher maintenance fee. And then that ends up making those particular units more expensive, and so here we go again, like driving up price when we're trying to do the opposite, so you know, that would be only a caveat that I would have with that, is I love the idea of this twenty percent mix or common wall, but not if it's gonna conversely add additional fees to the development. And I appreciate the willingness to examine the tree issue and, and make some sincere efforts to keep established trees and also keep a tree buffer between the development and I five on the edge of that corridor, I appreciate that very much.
Mayor, may I ask a question about process? I think, I think we would like you to vote on this tonight as well, I, I think since I originally spoke, it seems like you're pretty close, as Counselor Kellogg said. Has, is it possible for the council to vote on a general motion? If you want to do this, to vote on a general motion with direct, and direct staff prepare the precise language and then bring it back for you in the final decision on the twelfth of October, rather than try and craft the precise language tonight?
That's a Sean question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it makes sense to take whatever direction we get tonight to come back on the twelfth with, with actual language, and we can, we can, with staff, work through that language.
And, and Sean, if, if council chose to do that, would, would you, we, we would close the public hearing tonight get a tentative decision with direction in the motion, and then come back with, with the final language, or are you? I, I'm not, I'm just asking the question, I'm not sure how you all work.
Yeah, I think it's something, as, as staff, I'm not sure we'd want a tentative decision tonight, given that the proposal is is somewhat different than, than what was advertised, but, so I, I, I would think that we would bring back the proposal if there is additional testimony from the public regarding that proposal, that that be considered at that point in time. So I, I would suggest that it be left open, and and, and with the understanding that the proposal will be brought back for essentially a final tentative decision on the twelfth.
And that, Sean, would it be fair to say the testimony on the twelfth would be directed to the proposed language?
Yes.
All right, so based on that, I mean I guess I could would ask you, do you have a request for us to do that at this time, Mr. Robinson?
Mayor, I, I think based on everything, I, we, we'd like to get to a vote tonight, but, but I, you need to consider what your city attorney said, and I think he made a reasonable proposal. So we would ask you to continue the hearing, but continue it for the express purpose of considering final language that staff will work with the applicant on, it'll come back, the public will have an opportunity to review it, it should be it should be it, it should be responsive to what council has said tonight, so my thought is, it would be, it could be a very short public hearing on the twelfth, since testimony would be limited to the, to the precise language, and then you could vote.
And, and Mayor, just a, just a point of order, I saw a hand from Counselor Pratt, it's kind of hard to see with Zoom.
Okay, Council Pratt.
I know we're getting into the weeds here, but I really was saying that I want the three acres plus a pocket po- pocket park in what I'm looking for, so I know it's a little, maybe say sixty percent, and then we can call it in, I don't know.
What's a pocket park?
Just a small neighborhood park that would have maybe like a place structure or something, I would say, I don't know, what, a half acre? Something like that, uh, just a, nothing big, something, you know, just where kids could go and throw ball or
You could probably work with our Parks Director, I think we have several quote-unquote pocket parks in Toilton you could look at.
Um, I would like to point out that the, the property to the south, the Autumn Sunrise site does not have trees. So their open space is available for that pocket park, the, the Norwood site to the north is going to be more focused on tree preservation, so within that five percent open space, there is a very good opportunity for that to be the pocket park. Functionally.
But I think Council Pratt wants, her desires.
Well, I guess I want, I want, there's, there's a lot of trees in you've got them on I five, you've got them on Norwood, and I, I just, I'm just trying to maximize that I can get a green space, understand you're building here and in a business, but I'm just.
If I could pipe in a little bit, so we got to be careful about, you know, what we're doing here is zoning versus, versus looking at the actual development that will come in. So a lot of what you're talking about will be looked at as part of the conditional use process. And when they propose the actual development itself, and, and can be looked at at that point in time. Right now, it, it's just the zoning piece, so it, it's going to be how many acres are set aside for parks, open space, those type of things, or percent, or whatever it is you're gonna, you're gonna go with.
So, Mayor, just one last comment before we leave tonight, I think Counselor Pratt, there's no objection to doing a playground area, and we can work with the Parks Department, pardon me, in the actual application. But if we start to add on to the five percent, we're happy to give the five percent gross acreage, we start to add on to that. That's exactly what we were talking about earlier, it, it makes the development more problematic, both in terms of achievability and cost. We know, we don't want to ignore what you're saying, and I think Mamie made a good point. Maybe the southern one point six five acres includes the pocket park, it doesn't have trees, those are gone. And you can do that kind of development there, whereas the one point two five on the north emphasizes pre-retention. And maybe we could, you know, we could link them together with some kind of interior trail, as Counselor Grimes suggested, but I, I don't we do want to be cooperative, we do want to work, but it, it, all these things add up to affordability, which is what Counselor Reyes was talking about.
Okay, I understand that. I guess going down from Counsel Morrison's fifteen percent, would you be willing to compromise at six percent?
We, we offered five, I think we're stuck at five percent. But, but, you know, I'm not, I'm just looking at my notes here, I'm not seeing any any difficult emojis coming through me on the text. Five percent is what we're comfortable offering, and I think you can get a pretty, you can get a pretty decent usable open space on flat one point six five without trees, that's a pretty large piece of ground. Waiting for Council Pratt, she looks pensive.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Well, I, I guess the difficulty in park planning in a zoning discussion, I, I think that's a difficult thing to do, because, and I would feel much more comfortable having your direction of, we would like to see open space and park amenities in this development. And then allowing, when the application comes in, we have a Parks Master Plan, we have a Parks Planning and Development Staff that are used to doing this, they're used to working with applicants, and the applicants have, you know Parks SDC fees or credit, you know, like they, we can negotiate as a part of the application and the actual development. So I, I would, I guess I would, with all due respect, discourage you from trying to negotiate the type of place structure that goes on the
No, I under, I understand that, I, I'm sorry, it was more thinking out loud, because I want to make, ensure that we have enough green space for the Park Department to work with them. So I guess I'm not going to quibble over one percent.
Mayor, is it, is it entirely unrealistic to, to maybe get a motion tonight and close the public hearing? And, and I don't want to preclude the city attorney advising you off, obviously, I guess we, we worked very hard over the last couple hours, I'm sort of concerned about the two-week delay, and it feels like we're almost there, and we'll give you something you can be proud of, you'll get what you want. I, I'm concerned just generally about waiting two weeks, is it not possible legally, and I again, I'm not going to advise you, I, your city attorney does a good job of that, to get a motion tonight with general direction, the public's heard what's been said. And then come back with language that, that you could consider, and we're happy to work with staff during the two-week interim. And it could embody all the concepts we've heard from Councillors Grimes, Brooks, and Pratt.
Sean.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, you've heard my advice, I think, you, you know, at this point in time this is a planned text amendment, so a, a text amendment being the operative word there. And so what, what's been proposed is now different than what was advertised at the public hearing. Is it significant? I would say no, but it's still, it's still enough to where we need to work out language to bring back for the public to actually see what it is that's being considered. And to not have that, that opportunity, you know. That could pose a legal question going forward, if somebody were to appeal, sure. Are they successful? I couldn't tell you one, you know, whether or not they would or not.
Do we, do you think, Mayor, we have direction then from council on the open space question based on that discussion between Counselor Pratt and City Manager Lampus?
I think you do, you have the clear direction from us that we, you know, agree into the five percent.
So so the applicant will waive its final written argument, will work with staff on language over the next two weeks. My understanding is council will continue the hearing to the date and time certain of October twelfth at seven o'clock, wherein you'll open the public hearing on the revised language and take testimony on that, so we're not going to recreate the wheel and talk about other issues, and getting some head nods there. And we will extend the hundred and twenty day period, oh, I guess the hundred and twenty day clock doesn't apply since we're amending the text, so never mind. So, thank, I guess all I can say is, thank you very much, we appreciate your spirit of cooperation and working with us, and I'm confident we'll be able to get to something that, that all of you will like and appreciate and value as part of your community.
All right, well, I guess based on the coaching that was given by Mr. Brady, I, as Chair go ahead and declare that we can continue this hearing, per the request of the applicant to date certain of October twelfth. And that as long as no city councillor objects to it, that that extension of the continuation. That's all that is needed to continue this hearing, do I have any objections or continuance? All right, so you're welcome, thank you for working with us tonight.
Our pleasure, thank you very much.
All right. So let me move to my, back to my agenda. All right. So that concludes our public hearing, again, it'd be continued after over twelve. We had no items removed consent agenda, are there any further council communications tonight?
Can I just pop in on one? Um, I just, I had sent out, and I don't know if everyone saw the email, but I had sent out that email about the eviction moratorium that we had follow-up with Sherilyn around the governor, moving forward with that, I just wanted to thank everybody for their attention to that information and to note the special circumstances that runners in our area are facing.
All right, anyone else? Not seen any hands going up, all right, so do I have a motion for adjournment tonight? Have motion second adjournment for this evening, all's in favor, say aye. It's unanimous, thank you all for tonight, and we'll be chatting again in October. Have a good evening, everyone.